Oh, that's so good to see you. I have the wall of shame, yeah, I've made it.
Yeah, there you are.
All right, everybody ready?
Yep.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, June 7th, meeting of the Town Council of Southern Shores. I welcome you all. It's fine, almost to be summer evening. Could you please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm going to do something really quick tonight that I don't normally do before the moment of, before I ask for a moment of silence. I wanted to recognize a member of our community. His name is Richard Galgansky. He passed away last month. He was an alternate member of our planning board, you know, was also an active member of our volunteer fire department, and we want to send our sincerest condolences to his family and his friends. He was, he was definitely a volunteer for our community and a, just a representative of who we are here in Southern Shore, so. Now, if we could just have a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you very much. Counsel, we have on our agenda amendments or approval of agenda, and I think we need a couple of amendments tonight. I would ask for a motion to move item number nine to after number four. That's the discussion of town attorney's contract, and I would like to remove, have a motion that includes removing item six. The LeBlancs have pulled their ZTA 2205, and so we no longer need a public hearing for that zoning text amendment. Do I hear a motion? So, Mark, so moved. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
And Leo seconded, thank you so much. Any discussion? All those in favor of that amended agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carrie's five zero. We have an agenda. The consent agenda council is located on page three and includes one, number one, uniform guidance policy for the ARP, grant project ordinance for ARP, and approval of minutes. Any issues with the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? We can vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie's five zero. Thank you. All right, Lee, there is no Tim, so.
You got hung out the dry on this one.
Lee Nettles will take it over from here. Dare County Tourism Board, I'd just like to start out before Lee starts to say how grateful we are for the Dare County Tourism Board and their support of our, I know we have many locally funded walkway projects here in the town of Southern Shores and other efforts for our community betterment, and we just appreciate it very much, your partnership here in the town.
Well, thank you. We do as well. Thank you for bringing those projects to our, to us for consideration. We're happy to support them. So, as you mentioned, typically, this is the Tim and Lee show. Hopefully, I'll be able to deliver in his absence. Apologize, regret that he wasn't able to be here. So, I would, we had a public meeting yesterday, and it was about an hour and a half, so I'm going to try and boil this down to the 10-minute version. Needless to say, we've, we've had this property since 2007, 2008, and we've added to it over recent years. It's, it's a process. This has been quite a, quite a while in coming. The Tourism Board appointed an advisory committee. The advisory committee was, in all essence, the, the working group for developing the economically viable plans for an event center that could hold groups of 300 or more. We have gotten the unanimous consent of the advisory committee on the concept that I'm going to show you tonight. The Tourism Board unanimously approved it as well. Dare County Commissioners unanimously passed a resolution in support of the concept as well. We've made presentations to the Chamber Board, to Kill Devil Hills. So happy to be with you this evening, and as I mentioned, we had a public meeting in NAGS Head yesterday, and, and certainly, we expect additional presentations and meetings to take place in the future. A lot of work yet to do. We are just at a conceptual level right now. So, as you know, the, the Tourism Board has employed a strategy of using events to try and get people here during the less than peak months. Right now, we have 70% of our occupancy that's happening in June, July, and August. So, the Tourism Board spends most all of its money and, and most all of its energy in trying to flatten out that bell curve and grow those other seasons so that we're not in a, in a vulnerable spot and overly reliant on those three months. That is the mission of the Dare County Tourism Board, to promote Dare County's Outer Banks for overnight visitation during the less than peak months. Without a large indoor facility, we've, we've had some events that haven't happened, like the home builders. We just don't have a large enough venue. We've had other events, like Taste of the Beach. The most recently, the Chamber had a speaker. They had to break that into two sessions because there wasn't a facility large enough to hold it. So, we've either outgrown or aren't able to have host events in the first place. We, with an outdoor site, the event site is, is great, and it is, contrary to popular view, it is properly utilized during two months of fall and two months of spring. The problem is, we get into the hot months of summer, and we don't really want to have negative impacts during the summer months anyhow, but then that leaves, you know, November through March, April, where the weather's just so dodgy that it, it puts way too much risk on the event developer because they plan all year and then hope and pray that the weather cooperates. So, we're limited by weather, limited by season without the building. And then, as is the case right now, when you have large events out there, you're bringing in all the infrastructure, the porta potty, the tents and all that, which is not really economically feasible. So, what we're hoping to do with the event center is lower the risk for year-round events and truly have year-round events. We believe that the, the use types that we will particularly cater to are the banquet, social events, the galas, the speakers, but, but really, sports is a prime segment for us, and concerts, we believe, as well. We will also have meetings. We'll have some smaller conventions. It's not a convention center, though. When you think convention center, Virginia Beach, for instance, is more than 10 times the size of what we're proposing. Good for them, but not for us. One element that I'll share with you is a culinary training kitchen, not a, just a straight-up catering kitchen, but a culinary training facility that we believe will be of equal value for the community and for locals. That is a prime goal of all of our planning. So, from the, the economic impact study that we've had done for this facility, you can see that we, it's projected to produce 25 million in, in new spending within our community. It is projected to operate at a deficit, as are practically all these types of facilities of, by the fifth year, which they call the first stabilized year, of around 312,000. You might ask, well, why do you want to build a building that would run in a deficit? Well, we can plan for that deficit, but the main reason is the 25 million in new spending that it will produce. We believe that it will lead to 14,000 new room nights, again, in the shoulder seasons and off-season. Nearly 1.2 million annually in new tax revenue, and of course, tax revenue is increasingly important as beach nourishment continues on. We're looking for additional funding sources for that, so it should help. 191 new jobs throughout the community, nine full-time equivalent at the event center. This is a look at the event site right now. This is typically the place where Tim would hand over the presentation to me, so we'll move right into it. Tim just talked about some of the whys, why we think it makes sense for the community and why we think the, the event center will be beneficial for year-round tourism. I'd like to talk now about some of the, the what, what it is, and where we intend to place it on the site. You'll notice that it's 48,275 square feet. If you're like me, I didn't know what that really meant. A big building, sure. So, as a point of reference, it's less than half of the size of the former Kmart building, which is 110,000 square feet. It's closer in comparison to the public grocery store in KDH, which is around 45,000, 46,000 square feet. The main portion of it is the 26,000-square-foot event hall. You could fit three basketball courts side by side in that, and I'll show some sports layouts in just a second. Importantly, we, the committee approached this, you can imagine all the different options that were available when you look at that 15-acre property and wonder what you could do. So, the advisory committee found it useful to work backwards from the use types. Who do we hope to have in there? Who do we hope will use the facility and why? And then make sure that we're building the building based on those needs. So, you'll, the dotted lines within that orange rectangle, air walls, they can be expanded or, or collapsed, and, and this is a key principle of the design of the event center, that it's, the flexibility of the space. The gray area on the bottom is a retractable wall. The retractable wall will connect to the main event lawn, which is pretty cool. Again, just increasing the flexibility of the building and the site. The K is culinary training facility that, that I mentioned earlier. Instead of just having a catering kitchen, we thought that there was a real opportunity to work with COA, work with the high schools, and hopefully, train individuals within our community, increase and improve our workforce. If we can get this training facility going like we envision, hopefully, it'll be a draw for additional workforce to come to our area. It's another example, aside from the use types like sports and the concerts, the, the social events, the galas, the boardwalk that I'll show you. All of this is, we're intentionally trying to design the space so that it, it has equal appeal and value for both the people that live here as well as the visitors. The Tourism Board has a legal mandate to attract overnight visitation, but we don't have to do that at the exclusion of benefiting the locals that are here. So, we've taken great steps to, to try and be very intentional about the planning of it to benefit locals as well. I felt his presence.
Just in time.
Yeah, I, you know, I should turn, turn it over to him for the, anyhow.
Welcome, Tim.
So, here are some examples of sports layouts. As I mentioned, three basketball courts can fit side by side. That was important, you know, we were kind of coming from the use types. We didn't want to build a building and find out, oh, it fits two and a third basketball court. Or you could do one basketball court with retractable bleachers. We look to target groups of 300 to 2,500 people, giving the community something that it doesn't have right now. The middle column there has a couple of volleyball examples, and then on the far right, you see the top one is gymnastics. Underneath that is wrestling. The whole bottom row are different pickleball configurations, America's fastest-growing sport, and our community is, is very challenged with not having enough pickleball courts for the people that want to take advantage of that. And pickleball, not only is it the fastest-growing sport in America, it is a very hot tourism segment. One of the reasons that we like sports so much is because if you've had, if you've had kids and they've been on travel teams, you know that you go when they go, and typically, those travel teams are happening oftentimes during the non-summer months, so when school's in session and that kind of thing. And the other important part about going after the sports segment is, unlike meetings and conventions, where those attendees have an expectation of a hotel being attached to the facility, sports travelers don't. They'll travel for 20 minutes, half an hour, and not bat an eye, just, just to be there for the kids. Also, concert galas, as I mentioned. So, kind of back to that set-site layout, I'd point out the, the dark brown boardwalk there is the existing boardwalk. The light brown is the proposed boardwalk. We're very excited about this project. The Tourism Board is, is pushing it ahead, and we're, we're hoping that it'll come to fruition pretty shortly. It's in, we're working with the regulatory agencies now on the planning and hoping to dial in the final plans, but that will be quite an attraction once it's fully developed, we believe. So, I would point out, in this layout, the, the Dairy Queen that's there, and at the, at the terminus of the boardwalk, that's where the, the old mini-golf used to be. There's still quite a lot of dirt there that, that we left because it's going to become very useful in a little bit. I would also point out Pamlico Jack's. So, this is the view with the event center, the, the blue block, of course. We turned it for, for the reason that I mentioned before. That back wall on the event center is retractable, so we'll have the ability to open it up and connect the indoor with the outdoor, and again, just increase the flexibility of the space and be able to address the needs of more events and, and users. You can see a little parking marks over the Pamlico Jack's there. When the event center is built, the Pamlico Jack's building will go away. It will be an open view to the sound. The majority of the event center will be placed where the Dairy Queen is and where the mini-golf used to be, which was an obstructed view already. We calculated the percentage of street frontage, and with the event center, 75% of the view to the sound would be unobstructed, so three-quarters of the view would be unobstructed. Preserving that green space and that open view in connection to the sound was a, a top priority for us. 19% of the view was obstructed with Pamlico Jack's and the mini-golf and Dairy Queens, so not much of a trade-off there. And of course, with the boardwalk planning, we are working with different user groups and with the town to ensure that the public's use of it, right now, we have a bunch of kite boarders and windsurfers and all sorts of folks using it. We're planning the boardwalk so that it doesn't interfere with those uses. We want to continue to encourage the public to come out there and enjoy this amenity. We have a lot of issues yet to address, and they are significant. Any one of these issues could, could knock the project off track. We are happy with the consensus, the unified consensus that we've been able to achieve so far. We would certainly welcome your support as well. The, the town, we, we have gaps with the current ordinance. The ordinance was developed without regard for a building of this type, which doesn't exist on, hasn't existed on the Outer Banks before, so we expected these going in. We had a couple of members from the town on the advisory committee, so we've been working towards that all along. State regulatory, I think these issues will be easily met with the, with the site, and then working with the Tourism Board and with the county on the, the budgeting. We do have a dedicated funding line item within our budget for this project. We don't have the authority through our state legislation to take out a loan, so we need a partner. We have had initial conversations with the county, but certainly, much more conversation yet to happen. So, as you can see on the bottom, basically, having a concept and having a shared vision allows us to put all of our energy and effort behind one direction, instead of trying to, you know, push the waterbed with five or six different options simultaneously. So, hopefully, you can, you can see the thought that's gone into the event center. This was an abbreviated version, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Anybody have any questions? Tim, did you, did you want to speak? Welcome, again.
I want to apologize to the board for my tardiness.
That's okay.
Mr. Holland's never been late to any of my meetings. He's a great representative of the town on Tourism Board. I would just mention, yesterday, for those of you who did not catch the public hearing and the news that followed, a couple of things I think of, of note to back up here and look at the site. One of the things that we're very focused on is safety, and if you look at the site now, there are four curb cuts. We've reduced that to two with this, and public safety was a big issue yesterday during our public hearing. We also took some great comments from people who were there, like, for instance, friendliness for biking, making sure we consider those folks on the site, and we just see this as a vibrant opportunity. Yesterday, Lee used the word civic center instead of event center, and I think that really captures it in the sense that we're not looking to promote events during the season to fill this. We're looking for off-season, which is our mission, of course. We had to actually explain that yesterday, that the mission of the Tourism Board is to promote less than in-season visitation. So, we see this as a great opportunity during the summer months for our locals to enjoy this in other ways, like a pickleball, folks, I don't know if there's any here, but they're passionate about their sport, and they're looking for a place to play. I think we can help them. And the idea of the Culinary Arts Program, developing our current youth who live here to maybe work here in the future, is just really exciting. It was very nice to hear the comments yesterday from the public and the support we received from everywhere we've been, and we'd appreciate your support as well as we move forward. So, again, apologies for my tardiness.
No problem. Thank you. Anybody from the audience have a question for our presenters?
In a, in a, in voice today, they said three years, that you might be coming out of the ground. Is that pie, or is that, is it just whole? That's, flexible.
I think, I think that would probably be more on the ideal time, you know, if everything went well, I, three years is probably realistic on getting it together, but of course, everything that we would do, from final design to certainly construction, and the phases of construction would need to be put out to bid, and, and we've, we've certainly got a, a lot of, pardon the pun, ground to cover, so. It's, it's good to have goals.
It's a good idea. Yes, yeah, you'll never get there if you don't have a goal.
Yes, so one of, one of the comments that came out of the public meeting yesterday, and, and to Tim's point about the civic center, something that frankly, we hadn't thought of is whether we had considered the facility as a, as a possibility for an evacuation shelter, and I think that makes a lot of sense and would hopefully never be needed, but certainly be nice to have.
Well, you bookend both ends of the beach with the tourist center up here being proposed with the museum coming up, and with this down there, I mean, it bookends this part of the world very nicely, probably does, as attractive off-season.
Any other questions, counsel? Wonderful. Comments? Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, so very much. We appreciate your time and effort and your information sharing, and it's pretty exciting.
Please feel free to hit us up with emails and all that, if you do have questions at some point.
Very good. Thanks, Lee. Thanks, Tim. Next on our agenda is our attorneys. I'll hand it over to Ben Gallup, I think.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As all of y'all know, I've made the strange decision to go off on an adventure of starting my own solo law practice, and I've decided to leave the law firm of Hornthal, Riley, Ellison, Malin, and my last day with them will be July 6th. The town has had three town attorneys, I believe, Tom White, Ike McCree, and myself, and Tom integrated his practice with the practice of Hornthal, Riley, Ellison, Malin, and since that time, Hornthal, Riley has essentially been the town attorney for the town, with Ike first and me second as the, the figureheads of the people who come to the meetings. But never has it been an individual game. It's always been this whole group of guys here who encompass multiple real estate folks, multiple Hall of Fame attorneys, litigators, folks who review contracts and do estates, and folks who otherwise represent other towns, municipalities, the College of the Albemarle, various school systems, and who do personnel work. The only two people I believe who aren't here are probably the two that you're most familiar with, Robert Hobbs and John Lighty. Robert, who practices here with me and is a certified real estate specialist, and John Lighty, who has done all the town's personnel work for many years, and is also, as you know, NAGS Head's attorney and College of the Albemarle attorney, and, and so, me leaving is not leaving you in bad hands. You are in the same hands you've always been in, and each of these folks have, have always been great for me to work with, and in a lot of ways, I'm very sad to be leaving them, but they're going to do a good job for you. And Philip Hornthal is going to be the, the new designee of the firm to take the primary role with the town, and as of August, as of the August meeting, or if you have a mid-month meeting, I guess, in July, that you need an attorney for, Philip Hornthal will be the new person who's on the contract to be your primary attorney. And if you have any questions for me or questions for folks on Hornthal, Riley, who are still going to be here, you know, I can, first, I can introduce everybody if you wanted me to. We've got Brock Mitchell. He is in our Elizabeth City office, real estate practice primarily, does some bankruptcy, helps with local government municipal real estate at all times. Andrew Howell next to him. Andrew is primarily a, a wills and estates practitioner, but he does a lot of contracts, particularly for local governments, and, and is, is exceptional at that. He's done a number of the town's contracts. Don Prentice, Don, he keeps telling us he's a, gonna actually retire one day, and we don't necessarily believe it, but if there's ever any complicated litigation, Don's been there, he's done it. He's a Hall of Fame attorney and a great guy. Same with the gentleman next to him, Hood Ellis, who, you know, one of the great partners in our firm, and also the town attorney for the town of Eden, Edenton, where he lives, and his son, who is a good foot taller than him, if you can't tell, Marshall, has joined our firm in the last year and a half or so, and practices criminal law, and was a prior for six or seven years, a public defender with the federal Public Defender's Office. And then Johnny Hallow, who is a young, up-and-coming, excellent associate with the firm, who's been helping everybody out, from the school board to the local government to everybody else, what everybody else does. And last but not least is Philip Hornthal, who's going to be your primary counsel. He's been doing it a long time. He's good at it. He's done local government work through the league of municipalities and litigates complicated issues for local governments and others on lots of different fronts, and is very involved in the community in Elizabeth City, and, you know, deals with a lot of government entities and nonprofits and stuff in his, in his community role as well. So, if you have any questions of them, not sure which one of them wants to come up and talk, but feel free to ask me or ask them if you have any questions.
That's great. Thank you for all those introductions, Ben. So, just to be clear, we'll see you at one last meeting in July?
Yes, ma'am. July 5th.
Very good. And we'll be celebrating some milestones in some of our attorney deliverables, so that'll be exciting as well.
Well, most of them will be celebrated by Monday. And I can go ahead. The ones that are coming up are, you know, the easement litigation, that's all been filed, and the, the amicus brief is in process, and barring COVID or death, should be filed Monday.
Very good.
Good.
Excellent. Well, we just appreciate, first of all, everyone coming out and introducing themselves. Thank you so much, gentlemen, for, for coming out and, and doing that tonight. We appreciate it very much. We have had very good service from our attorneys, so we're trying to stay out of court as much as he, as we possibly can. That's the goal. I do often say, though, please go ahead and sue us, I think we'll win, but so far, no one has done that since I've been around, so that's good. So, we've gotten good advice. Ben's kept us out of court, so that's good, for the most part. So, thank you so much.
And welcome, Philip.
Yeah, well, Philip. Counsel, any?
I just want to say, I feel like I'm back at motion hour. This is just really amazing.
Very good. Well, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, feel free, anyone who doesn't wish to stay for the rest of our exciting meeting, you, you, you are more than welcome to, to take your leave. We appreciate you coming out tonight very, very much, and look forward to a very fruitful relationship between the town and, and your firm. Thank you so much.
We promise we're not charged for helping the ideas.
We like that. We appreciate that, Mr. Ellis. Absolutely. And our friends from the Tourism Board, you, that applies to you as well, if you guys need to, there's no reason for you guys to, to stay around if you don't want to either.
But you can if you want to.
But you can if you want to. Oh, good. We get brochures. Nice. That's excellent. Thank you.
There'll be a test at the July 5th of There'll be a test at the July 5 about everything.
Very good. All right. Next on our agenda, I believe, are, are staff reports. So we'll start out with Wes, our deputy town manager and planning director.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Members of council have a report for y'all tonight for the month of May. With respect to permits, there were a total of 58 permits issued in the town. Nine of the permits were zoning permits, 21 were building permits, 26 were trade permits, one sign permit, one lot disturbance demolition permit, and that was for the marketplace. You probably noticed that there's been some activity taking place out there. They have fenced in a portion of the parking area on, on the front as well as the back, and they've started doing work in those areas. They have not started work on the building yet, but we anticipate that will probably begin within the next week or two. And then lastly, the total amount of fees collected in May was $13,159.40. With respect to the town planning board, they will be meeting here in this room on June 20 at 5 o'clock. The board will be considering ZTA 2207, which is a ZTA submitted by the town to amend multiple articles in Chapter 36 to be consistent with North Carolina General Statute 160D. The board may also discuss potential commercial design standards for the commercial zoning district. And the board may also reconsider ZTA 2108 zoning text amendment from the town to amend 36-165 regulations governing signs. Any questions?
Any questions for Wes, Counsel? Seeing none. Thank you so much, Wes. Appreciate it very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you say 5 o'clock for the planning board meeting start time?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
You guys kind of float that around depending on?
5 o'clock on the 20th.
Got it. Thank you. Our police monthly report from Chief Colt. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The May 2022 Police Department report, we had 17 incidents, which are the actual crimes that were reported, total of 24 total offenses. We had six criminal arrests for a total of 10 offenses that they were charged. Let's see, we had 112 traffic stops, and out of that, there were 31 citations issued and another 77 warning citations. Let's see, ordinances, four failure display, and then we had six parking in the right of way. We do have a community resource office that'll be starting in a couple of weeks, so those numbers will go up. And he's a nice young man and comes from a law enforcement family, too. And I think he's looking to possibly go to COA for at least two years. So if it works out, we may get him for three years. So he's high school graduated this year.
That's great.
Good.
And we had three motor vehicle accidents that were reportable. And then when you see the calls for service, we had 1,894 compared to 1,400 in 2021. K-9 is working out very well. You can see some of the incidents out there. We've had four, we've had a lot more since then, requests for checking vehicles with the dog. And that's been going very well.
Is that all in the city or?
Some of those are from outside, too. Our guys are using them quite a bit, but so is Kitty Hawk.
Okay.
Yep. Any questions?
Did you ever receive the outfitted vehicle for the K-9?
Not yet.
It's because of COVID. I'm just tired of hearing that. We got the two marked ones. We're waiting for the two ghost packages. They keep telling us this week, this week, this week. So, and, and I know they're shorthanded as well, but we're hoping within the next couple of weeks. So he's still driving around in a pickup truck. So.
Are we ever gonna meet the dog?
You will. Yes.
So you mean? Checking you out?
What time do you plan on leaving here? Yeah, we're gonna, we'll, we'll set something up for you. I want to, I want him to get a little bit more comfortable. He actually went to Kitty Hawk Elementary School this week, did a walkthrough, kids got to pet the dog and everything. So, yeah, went over pretty well.
Very good. Thank you, Chief.
I just have one question. You know, we've all been deeply concerned about the shootings in the different schools, particularly the latest one in Texas. I know you can't go into a lot of detail about this, but can you say something to reassure the council and the community that our police department and our school work together on all of this?
I can. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. As you can even see in our annual reports, we train at the school three or four times at a minimum throughout the year. And then in the summertime, we actually do a lot of our active shooter training. I can't speak to what happened there. What I can tell you is what happens here. The way we've been trained is even if it's one officer, they're going in and they're going to try to eliminate wherever the active shooter is. All of our officers have gone through it. We're actually, we have three new officers who have been taken through to school. They walk through to school. We, we walk through to school at least two or three times a day anyway, plus we have a school resource officer. But we'll be training again with not only our people, but we train with Kitty Hawk, and we, we train with Duck, so that they're all on the same page and they know what is expected of them, because they're going to be here probably quicker than a lot of our guys. But we've also done a lot of that training with the fire department, so that they're familiar with a lot of the triage and, and those types of things. And we've met with the teachers. We haven't been able to conduct anything with them. But we've explained to them so that they know that, God forbid that ever happens, this is why we're not coming to your room right now. It's because we're actually trying to engage and eliminate the threat. But I can assure you that our biggest problem is going to be keeping some of the off-duty officers in plain clothes out of the inner perimeter, because you know as well as I do, our department, we've got at least a couple of people, they've got kids in that school. So I can tell you that there is not an officer on this department that wouldn't go in immediately. And that's, and that's how we're trained, ever since Columbine.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I had a more lighthearted comment.
Okay.
Wait, on Friday, I think there was a license check set up. Is that going to be a more regular thing? Or was that a unique situation?
Could be, but I don't really want people to know that. Yes.
I won't burn it then.
Yeah. Yes. That's all I can tell you.
No, I have my license.
Not necessarily in the same spot that you saw.
I wouldn't expect it to be. I just didn't know if you're like trying to find a warrant.
Well.
But you don't need to tell me.
A little bit, a little bit of everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it so much. Chief Lynn Bucker?
Good evening.
Evening, Council, Mayor. For the month of May, fire department responded to a total of 71 calls. And pretty easy month. Three structural fires, one cooking fire, one dumpster fire, one mobile home fire, which was actually in Kitty Hawk, a brush fire, 48 medical calls, one motor vehicle with accident, two with, or with injury, two without, and one person stuck in an elevator up on Ocean Boulevard, a natural gas leak, one electrical wiring problem, four public service, which also included the participation with the police department for a walk and bike to school for the Kitty Hawk Elementary School, and then five fire alarms with one authorized burning also. Any questions on that?
Any questions, Counsel?
I would just like to say thank you to Wes for the marketplace. He got us in contact with the site superintendent and the manager. And the training that the guys have been doing down there for the last three weeks has been pretty much invaluable. Would not be able to get that training around here for years. So I mean, the guy was very, very, at least as far as I'm concerned, very nice to us and helped us out in training, and been very, very amiable to anything we needed. So.
That's nice.
Thank you, Wes. I appreciate that.
Wow. Thanks very much.
Just following up on the chief said, for the school thing, Sergeant Brinker was actually in fire practice Tuesday. We did a little talk just for some of the newer guys. So this kind of training is always going on. And as you all know, I, me and the chief have lunch at least once a week usually, so we're always in very tight, close contact with each other. So, all right.
Thank you so much.
I just want, I noticed the rescue and medical service, there were 52 incidents. What, what did that, is that compared to last year? Is that up, down, or what's involved?
Last year was, it's actually down, or it's up. Last year was only 34. So, and that could sway, even if you just have one sick person that's going to the hospital a couple of times a week, that's how fragile that number is. It can move either way, you know. And that's true of all the departments. We all do the same thing. So.
I just was wanting a little clarification. Now I understand.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate all y'all, all y'all's efforts to keep us safe. Next, I'll call on Cliff, town manager. Good evening.
Evening. Thank you. Just two things I wanted to briefly touch on. First, the cut through traffic. As you know, Memorial Day weekend, we started with the barricades at each one of the locations that we previously mentioned. We also barricaded the road at Hickory and East Awgwood, and we had some, we had some problems. I'm surprised the chief didn't add a lot of those problems that were probably numbers in that may report. But the problem was the, the cars that were coming from the Hickory end to Hillcrest were just ignoring the signage that we had there. And it was, it caused some backups. It caused some turnaround issues, and it kept the police busy there. So we didn't barricade this past weekend partly to work those kinks out, partly also because we felt like we'd have a little bit of a lull, maybe. And, you know, the effort, just the juice wouldn't worth the squeeze, at least for this past weekend. But we're going to, we've ordered some additional signs that are very clearly, the signs that we have say, and I don't know that this will help, but it says, "Stop, dead end, no outlet." And we'll put that on the barricade, and we'll put it right there at the top of that hill and hope that people will not continue to ignore it. Also, we're going to have to add some additional barricades in the right of way there at Hickory, because we had cars that would, were going to drive around it one way or another. And we'll have to likely fill those barricades as full as we can with water, just in hopes of keeping them from being moved. We've also, the DOT this past weekend put out, you may have seen the mobile message board that DOT put out on the Currituck side, it says, it says, "Northern Beach Traffic, Keep on US 158 and NC 12." I think we'll get Dare County's mobile message board out this week and put it on this side of the bridge. We've had our message board on 12 to warn people about the speed limit change, the dropping speed limit. Eventually, we'll put that, maybe we'll put that on South Awgwood, asking folks to, to slow down there. The traffic counts, I mean, it's early. When we look at, if you kind of look at 13th Avenue with northbound traffic leaving town, it's kind of the control or the, the, you know, a good measure of traffic. Those numbers, along with those, both weekends have been pretty close. They've been, 2021 to 2022, the last two weekends, the numbers have been, the amount of cars has been pretty close. But the, the traffic on some of the interior streets has decreased, at least these last two weekends. And I've probably jinxed this, but we've seen some significant decrease on South Awgwood, Sea Oats, Hick, and Hickory. Maybe the first set of weekends, they've been courteous, and hopefully they'll continue to do that. But we're going to start back with that barricade this weekend, and then we'll just continue the, these steps all the way through the rest of the summer. No questions on beach nourishment. Actually, two staff were here today from CTE, the engineering firm. They were surveying the beach, collecting some drone footage. Ken Wilson reported that just about all the pre-construction permit and compliance work is done. They've started staging in Killdoble Hills. They've got one of the sublines in already. They'll put a second subline in. Right now, they're planning for Saturday. You'll see, if you're riding through there, you'll see delivery of dozers and, and pipe. Both dredgers, dredges are on their way. The RN Weeks and the BN Lynn Home, you can follow them on Marine Traffic. Right now, they're just outside of Jacksonville, right near Jacksonville, Florida, and they're working their way to us. And they could possibly start pumping sand next week in Killdoble Hills. And of course, I think you're familiar with the schedule. We're just kind of waiting in line, scheduled to, to finish up in Killdoble Hills and move to Kitty Hawk early July and move to Southern Shores in early August. So waiting and watching.
Thanks, Cliff. Any questions for Cliff?
Nope.
No? Sounds good. Appreciate it. We have come to the time for public comments. Do we have any general public comments? Oh, do we want the town attorney? Sorry. I thought we already gave you time. Just kidding. Have some more time.
I covered just about it. I think I've already spoken more tonight in the combined amount of the last five years. But I did want to cover, recover what we talked about. Amicus brief for the Mick Curry Tuck Bridge stuff is in process. The government agencies, the defendants filed their brief yesterday, which was their due date. I read it last night and have looked at it today. And they did a great job. I think the more I get into it, that they've got a great position. The plaintiffs have a weaker position, and I think that the, the government agencies did an excellent job of putting their brief together. Hopefully, I'll be able to come up with something to add to it. The next thing is the nourishment easements. We came down to, there were five that we, there's one voluntary that we think we're still going to get, and then there were five that we don't have any interaction with the people at this point. So we filed lawsuits to confirm the existence of an easement, and if not, to condemn whatever is necessary to be able to perform the project. My hope is that those lawsuits will ultimately prompt all five of those people to come up with some resolution, providing a voluntary easement. That's, history shows that a very, very high majority, that's how that works out for. And with only five, the hope is that it will be all five. But time will tell. We'll just keep an eye out. They're out for service now via UPS. So people will be getting them, and either we'll hear from them when, soon, or we'll hear from them at the time that they have to respond, which is, is a while from now. And then the last thing, there's been some talk about, Mr. Haskett mentioned the, the sign ordinance, and that's another thing that's on my list to get to before I, before I depart for my new adventure. But I just wanted to let you know that that's something that I'm planning on looking at, but that the priorities of the easements and the amicus brief have gotten ahead of that. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
I don't have a question, just a comment, that we were contacted today, today by Prequemmons County, and they passed a resolution, and we've passed that on to Ben. And I think that makes seven surrounding counties, I mean, which I think is just really great regional support for this.
Yep. There's a lot of regional support, and we've got, the amicus is going to have six parties on it at this point. It's going to have Southern Shores, Duck, Currituck, Dare County Tourism Board, the Currituck Chamber of Commerce, and the Duck Community and Business Alliance. So all of those entities will be on the amicus brief at this point.
That's good.
That's pretty strong.
Very good.
Thank you, Ben.
Yes, ma'am.
In the, the, your experience is five holdout easement folks. Is that low, medium, high? Is that average?
I'm not sure. How many total were there that we had to get? It's 132. Yeah, that's, that's probably about average for a first real project there, you know. The first real project on the beach had considerably more.
Yeah.
And then other projects have had similar that. And then other projects have had similar that I'm aware of. Only one town that I'm aware of has kind of avoided having to file anything at all. But it, sometimes it's because people don't get it, don't get the, don't get the mailings, don't know what's going on. Sometimes people have their perspective on things, and, and they choose not to respond. But it, typically, the lawsuit end of it, it will get them to at least respond in some form or fashion.
Gotcha.
And if they don't, then, then when the time runs for them to respond legally, then we can go and get a default judgment, and we move on with that.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have statements or comments or questions for Ben?
I got a question for Cliff. Will you have a minute?
Oh, okay. We have a minute. Fire away.
Cliff, in a Virginia pilot this morning, they talked about saving the Outer Banks. It was lead article on the right-hand side of the front page. Said we're going to be, the whole area was going to have a breach nourishment every five years. Just, yeah, just a point of knowledge, probably more than anything else. I, I perked up when I read that, and I said, I didn't know that everybody was planning that. But they just kind of piqued my interest. I'm, if any of our residents were reading it, they're going, we're going to do this again in five years. Just something to be ready for.
Yeah, we knew that.
It was a lead article. So, that paper's worth it.
That could, could be seven years.
Could be 10 years. Could be never.
Well, yeah, never is a high probability.
Reading it, it just said five years. I mean, I'm sure some other people would say, really? You know, that money, five, three, five years?
Okay. That was always a part of the discussion.
So just to verify, did we, I'm sorry about getting the town attorney out of order. My bad. General public comment, there, there isn't anyone signed up? All right. So we're going to move on to new business. And this is a public hearing for the recommended budget of the town of Southern Shores. Cliff?
Thank you. As you know, the recommended budget was presented back on, on May 3. You had a workshop at your May 17 meeting. We're recommending from that workshop some changes to the recommended budget. The, the increase in land transfer revenue to offset an increase in COLA from three and a half to 5%. We've got a reduction in the bridge maintenance line item in Public Works. We have a reduction in vehicle operations in Public Works. We've removed funding for Public Works mowers that we can purchase out of current year funds. And we're recommending an increase from contribution to the capital reserve fund for canal maintenance from 20,000 to 100,000 this year. And then moving forward, of course, you adopt the budgets those years. But moving forward, we'd recommend 50,000. If you approve these changes, that would bring the use of unassigned fund balance to balance the budget from 312,671 Part of the process, there's a public hearing, which I'll step aside from now. But two things we're asking you for tonight is action on the budget, as well as the consolidated fee schedule. You'll see there was some changes, increase in fees from some of the planning department fees. So we'll be asking you to consider that as well.
Cliff, I'll turn it over to our attorney, Ben Gallup, for public hearing on the town's budget.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on the town's proposed budget for the 2223 fiscal year? Raise your hand so I can see you. Seeing no one, I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on the town's proposed budget for the 2223 fiscal year? I'll close the public hearing, Madam Mayor. I don't see anyone who wishes to speak.
Thank you, Ben.
Yes, ma'am.
If, I know you're going to discuss this, but the budget ordinance, you'll see, I think we put a new one in front of you. There, there's one change to that, that we're asking. The, back in 2007, the town created by resolution a capital reserve fund, and then amended that in 2012. The language in that capital reserve fund establishes a use for canals and bulkheads. The, the budget amendment, I mean, excuse me, the budget ordinance on the second page, it, it added somewhere along the line, and I think it was actually in that first year that this fund was established, added the word channel. And so we're asking now at this time, opportunity now to take that word out. It's, it's listed twice. You'll see the, at the top of the page, the capital reserve fund and expenditures appropriations authorized and revenues anticipated. We're asking that if you approve this budget ordinance, that you strike that, those two words.
Thank you, Cliff. Counsel, do you, I guess I want to reiterate the point, some key points. Number one, there's, there's no recommended change in the adverallorm tax rate for the town. We're going to use a little over $365,000 from the unassigned fund balance to balance the budget. Second, we've had this information for more than a month. We had an all day, well, most of a day, retreat to discuss what we thought were budget concerns, questions, what we wanted to look out for the future, et cetera, et cetera. It was a long, good discussion day. It was all about the budget. So we've had this material for quite some time. And so I think we've gotten pretty comfortable with it. But I just want to make sure, before we go any further about a motion, to make sure that there's no other questions or comments that other council members might want to make.
No, I think we've had a lot of input from the staff and the department heads, and we're very secure about this.
Yep. There's been a lot of work on it.
Yep. I agree. A lot of hard work.
Yeah. I mean, I agree. I think the staff's been very open, and we've been able to look at everything with a clear eye. And I believe that this is a reasonable budget for the town and for the citizens.
Okay. So we need a motion for approval of the amended budget ordinance, I believe.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Last chance for any further discussion. All those in favor then? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
But just move.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you all very much. All right. Moving on now to, one more thing. Sorry, Cliff. Go ahead.
The fee schedule.
Fee schedule. Oops. My bad. It's right here in front of me. I need a, well, first of all, just to summarize very briefly, we're going, we haven't changed the fees in how many years, Wes?
Since 2014.
Since 2014. There's been no increase in these plan review fees or building permit fees, et cetera, et cetera, as listed on the sheet in front of you. We're, we're bumping a few of them up, as you can see. Any questions, comments, concerns about the new fee schedule for the town of Southern Shores?
I don't have any.
All right. So I need a motion to approve this amend, this new fee schedule.
I move that we adopt the fee schedule ordinance number 2022-0602.
Very good. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion at all? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance carries five to zero. Thank you again. Okay. We're done with all the budget stuff, correct? So we're moving on to the public hearing for ZTA 2206. And I'll hand it again over to our distinguished attorney, Ben Gallup.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a legislative public hearing on ZTA 2206, which is a zoning amendment application submitted by Quabon Associates PC on behalf of Gingite LLC to amend Town Code Section 36-207(c) conditional uses. As a legislative public hearing, parties will not have to be sworn. This is not an evidentiary hearing. Parties who wish to speak can raise their hand, and I will recognize them. If you'll come to the podium, say your name and address, and you'll have four minutes to speak. And first, we will start with Mr. Haskett, the town planner, who'll provide information, background on the project. And then we'll have the applicant speak if they wish to. And following them, we'll have members of the public speak. So, Mr. Haskett.
Thank you, Mr. Gallup. The next item on y'all's agenda tonight is ZTA-22-06. The applicant is Gingite LLC, and the applicant's representative is Michael W. Strater Jr. with Quabon Associates. And the requested action is to amend the town zoning ordinance by amending Section 36-207(c) conditional uses. The applicant is proposing a zoning text amendment to amend Section 36-207(c) to allow the group development of commercial and residential buildings as a conditional use in the C General Commercial Zoning District. The use will be permitted through the issuance of a conditional use permit, actually should be special use permit per 160D statutes, which is what's going to be part of ZTA 2207, the planning board will consider this month. So that will be addressed. Section 36-207 currently allows the group development of commercial buildings only. Example would be the marketplace and Southern Shores Crossing. Section 36-207 also currently allows residential uses, including DTAC single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings or duplexes, multi-family dwellings, and accessory buildings. But such uses would be limited to only one principal building and its customary accessory building on any lot. If approved, this ZTA would allow group developments consisting of multiple principal commercial and residential buildings on a single lot, subject to the following requirements. A, minimum size of any building shall be 2,500 square feet. B, all buildings constructed within 35 feet of another building within the development are to be connected by a breezeway or covered walkway. C, lots shall be serviced by an existing community wastewater treatment facility permitted by NCDQ-DWR. D, residential density shall be limited to RS8 district allowances as, as established within Section 36-203A. And lastly, E, no more than 40% lot coverage of the net parcel area can be associated with building footprints containing residential uses and the required parking residential uses. With respect to lot coverage, as, as this is proposed, two calculations would be required in order to demonstrate compliance if this ZTA and a site plan are subsequently approved. One lot coverage calculation would need to show that, that the total lot coverage for the development, for the entire development-only lot does not exceed 60% of the total lot area. Or 67% if permeable pavement in excess of 5% of the total lot coverage is provided. The other lot coverage calculation would need to show that the lot coverage for residential building footprints and residential parking spaces does not exceed 40% of the net parcel area. And the net parcel area is defined as the total area to be developed minus any area covered by waterways, marshes, or wetlands. Just a few examples of some of the commercial properties that could potentially meet the proposed requirements for group developments consisting of commercial and residential buildings. 5391, Virginia Dare Trail, Southern Shores, REOT. 5500 North Crowatan Highway, Marketplace. 5355 North Crowatan Highway, Southern Shores, REOT Maintenance. One Ocean Boulevard, Southern Shores Crossing, and 6195 North Crowatan Highway, owned by the applicant, Gingite LLC. With respects to the town's land use plan, town staff feels that the applicable policy to this ZTA would be policy number two. With respect to recommendation, during your consideration, questions and discussions should mainly focus on the ZTA and not a potential site plan for the proposed use. Policy two of the town's land use plan establishes the commercial district as a small district for convenience, shopping, and services. The land use plan also establishes that incompatible uses in the commercial area are limited to residential low-density, educational, and conservation services. Since commercial and residential group developments will most likely consist of high-density residential development mixed with commercial development, town staff has determined that the proposed amendments are consistent with the town's currently adopted land use plan. Town staff and Chairperson, Planning Board Chairperson Ward spent a considerable amount of time reviewing and discussing this application. He is here tonight, and I believe he would like to provide a few comments on their action at some point tonight. As a result, Chairperson Ward, after our discussion, suggested additional, additional requirements to be added to the proposed language that clarify the requirements for quote-unquote "mixed-use group developments", which would slightly change the terminology of the use in Section 36-207 by showing them in one section of the zoning ordinance. Another additional requirement establishes a 50% lot coverage requirement based on the net parcel area, or 55% if permeable pavement in excess of 5% of the total lot coverage is proposed. The town planning board determined that the application is consistent with the town's currently adopted land use plan, and they recommended denial four to one of the application as presented. However, the board did recommend approval of the ZTA with Chairperson Ward's additional requirements and a minimum 25% lot cover, coverage requirement for residential building footprints and parking spaces. The board's recommended requirements are shown for illustrative purposes in PBZTA-2206. Town staff recommends approval of the application with the planning board's recommended requirements. Going forward with this application, since we do have the applicant's application, as well as the applicant's application with the planning board's recommended requirements, this is a little bit unique. So there are several options. One, you could approve the ZTA as presented. Two, deny the ZTA as presented. Three, table consideration of the ZTA. Four, approve the ZTA with the planning board's recommended requirements. Five, amend the ZTA, which may require another planning board review. Or six, send the ZTA back to the planning board for further discussion. That concludes my staff report. Mr. Gallup?
Thank you, Mr. Haskett. Does anybody on the council have any questions for Mr. Haskett?
So this would apply to all the properties you listed here as commercial?
These are some of the properties, but it would imply, it would apply to all of the commercial properties.
So if the 7.9 acres want to be developed, they would have to have a wastewater treatment plant?
In order for this use to be approved, the property would have to have an existing community wastewater treatment facility. So that means that would have, the town would have to approve that first before they could approve this proposed use, if the proposed use is in fact approved.
Just, just reading it, it seems like the changes were made against the one property. That's just my opinion, looking at it right now. But I'll wait to hear more.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just reading it right now. That's just my, my two cents.
Any other questions from counsel? Thank you, Mr. Haskett. Does the applicant have anybody who wishes to speak? Mr. Gupta?
Hello. Good afternoon, or I guess, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sumit Gupta. I'm representing the applicant. I appreciate your time and consideration this evening. So what prompted this text amendment for us is we have a property in Southern Shores, along the Gingite Creek, and it's a commercial property, roughly five acres. We think it's a pretty significant property for the town, and it's currently zoned commercial. We started planning a commercial group development on the property. We wanted to do something pretty nice. We had almost kind of create a little commercial village on it. And the plan was to just follow all the current rules and regulations. So in the midst of planning that property, we felt that we felt that in the mix of the commercial, it would be beneficial to the area, and we think the town to have some multifamily residential. The property we had, you can do multifamily residential, or you can do all commercial as a group development. You can parcel the property off into separate properties. So with the idea of bringing multifamily into it, we met with, you know, we met with Mr. Haskett a few times and got his opinion on it, and he thought our request to allow residential into the group development was consistent with the land use plan, but he also advised us that it would have to go through a zoning tax amendment. We also had several meetings with other town officials just to get their input and wanted to do our due diligence, and I believe the consensus was, you know, people, that the idea of bringing multifamily into group development was a good idea. So we brought our first tax amendment to the planning board. We went to the planning board two times, and the first one we brought, there was a good, there was a question raised about, well, what if you do only one commercial shop, and the rest of it is residential? Now, you're getting a commercial lot coverage, but you're only doing, you know, one residential, one commercial shop, ice cream shop, or whatever it may be. Thought it was a good point, and so we updated our zoning tax amendment and proceeded to go to the planning board a second time. So that concern was addressed two ways. One, there is a density cap on residential. So you would still, you would still have to meet the RS8 density cap and requirements for that. But second, we added an additional rule parameter in there, updated ZTA, which said that you cannot develop more than 40% of the property into residential. And where that figure came from is, well, that's the allowable residential lot coverage right now. So if we were to do a mix, we cannot do more than 40%, and if we, you know, if we maxed out, we would only have the remaining lot coverage to do commercial. So I just, you know, that was our way of addressing that particular issue in it. Also want to point out that initially, bringing residential into this, we don't see this as a density increase. We see this as trading off commercial space on that property for residential space, because you would be sacrificing commercial space for every square foot of residential you'd be bringing into this. So it's really, I mean, the question at hand is, is it a good idea to bring, take some of that space and allow residential space and not only commercial? I believe the planning board, from my understanding, was generally supportive of the idea, again, of bringing multifamily. As part of their recommendations, they listed out some dimensional requirements that they wanted to see as part of the ZTA. In my understanding, they will be applicable regardless if they were in the ZTA or not. As the applicant, we have no issue with incorporating those requirements, the dimensional requirements. I think it comes down to where I would disagree with is the lot coverage. It was proposed for the lot coverage to be 50%. Kind of, the idea is in between what's allowable in commercial, the 60%, and the residential 40%. I feel like this development shouldn't be penalized for trading off commercial to residential. And if you look at some of the surrounding townships and counties and townships for, that allow mixed use of residential and commercial, the majority of the lot coverage is 60%, and some go to 65 to 70% in a mixed use. So I believe we're consistent with that, and, you know, if we decided to go down to 50%, and you felt that was beneficial, I don't know where, what we would end up doing, because we would be losing lot coverage. I don't know if, on at least the property we would develop, we would likely go back to commercial. I think if, if we were able to maintain the lot coverage, then we are okay with the different suggestions the planning board made. Another suggestion was that they wanted to see the minimum amount of residential, not to go below 25%? 25%? So not just to put one residential unit, which would defeat the purpose anyway, then you're back to commercial. But I thought it was a good idea. The real question here is the lot coverage. Is, I believe it needs to, you know, we're questioning it for it to stay the same is really the main difference right now between where our position is and the planning board recommendation. We have no issue with any other stipulation and addition that the planning board added outside of the lot coverage. And I'm here to answer any questions. And also, we have Mike Strater from Quabell to answer any technical questions related to this. Thank you very much.
Anybody on the council have any questions for Mr. Gupta?
I'll ask one. So if, if you, if the council decides to adopt a zoning tax amendment, you are, there's nothing to compel you to do anything with that zoning tax amendment. In other words, you could actually literally put the property up for sale, or whatever. I mean, it's your property, so you could do whatever you want to with it. So just to make it clear, this zoning tax amendment is sort of standalone. It doesn't mean you're going to do what the zoning tax amendment says. It just means that you could do that.
Yes, you are correct. So this is independent of any specific property right now, but it obviously was prompted by our property. We could still sell it, not do anything with it, and that is, that is the case. Yes.
Thank you.
I have a quick question for you. I'm familiar with some of these mixed-use developments, and some of them are really very charming. And they take full advantage of the surrounding environment, and that particular piece of property has a little waterfront area. Looks like it could have some views, and what are you envisioning there? I think our community would want to know. What are you envisioning to be in that space?
So, you know, while this tax amendment is not about that specific property, we have done a lot of planning on that specific property. And we do want to take advantage of the waterfront and create a walkway there, make a place for boats to pull up there as well, and do a charming village. And we have it really all planned, and in multiple buildings, and meeting all the height, parking, lot coverage, everything on that property, except we couldn't bring in residential. What this would allow is to bring residential into that. Still with a density limitation. And, but, you know, unfortunately, we can't, this is not site-specific, so we can't show anything, you know, we certainly advise not to. But a lot of planning is going, and we do not have an intention to sell that property. We've gotten several offers just to, you know, while we, tomorrow's not promised. We want to do a beautiful development. Whether this is approved or not, if this is not approved, we will do all commercial and do a nice commercial development. If it is approved, I would love to bring some critically needed residential. And if I may add to that, there's a major crisis of having workforce housing and multifamily rentals. That would not be our intention for this property. We are working on that in other places. This would be luxury condos. And I think it's a very, you know, when you get to a certain age, you want to stay in Southern Shores. Right now, you have to leave if, you know, if you want to get a place like that. So it would add a little bit of that type of product, if you will, housing types. So, yeah.
Thank you.
I just want to be clear in my head that the changes that are proposed here in this text amendment would apply to any commercial property.
They would apply.
For mixed use, right?
They would apply to any property in that district.
In that district?
As long as it met the requirements.
Okay.
In the general commercial district?
General commercial district.
Correct.
It's a use within the general commercial district.
Yes. So any, any piece of property in that district that met the requirements could be developed or redeveloped.
RS8, in RS8? No, in, in.
No, it's.
General commercial.
General commercial, period.
Yeah, like if you look at these five properties, this is number 11. There's 10 other items of uses for the general commercial district, and this is just adding an 11th use.
But the ones on here, on Wes's summary here, are the ones, right now, is there time limits that are considered general commercial?
In Wes's.
Summary here.
Oh, those properties are in the general commercial district.
They're general commercial, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So this tax amendment would affect all of them?
Yes.
I mean, I think what he's pointing out is those might actually, as they sit, they would also potentially meet some of the requirements because their size and setback requirements.
Okay.
But the way to look at this is, any property in the C district that meets the size and setbacks requirements, this would apply to that property. It's not going to just apply to the Jingai LLC property or the properties over here. Anything that meets the requirements.
All that stuff, yeah. Okay, got it. And net, so the net amount would work to them too if you had water or marshes. Because it says here, this is net footprints and residential parking sources not to exceed 40% of the net parcel area excluding, excluding waterways, marshes, and wetlands. So if anybody has all that, it would be excluded in any commercial area.
For the residential.
For the residential.
For the residential.
Just residential, not commercial.
That's what Mr. Haskett is saying.
Okay. But, well, this is a new venture, really, for the town. So we want to make sure it's being done properly. And I guess I look at, okay, it's a good, apparently a good concept. I haven't seen any of the plans. But have you had, have you done any of these here within Dare County?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, please?
The, the plans that you got for that piece of property of mixed, commercial, and residential, do you have any, have you had any like that somewhere else in the county?
No, sir. We've developed apartments. We've developed, we were working on a few. We're working on a community, a mixed-use community in, in Manio, next to the, where the CVS is, right there on the bypass, where, so that's our, we have not developed something here locally of this nature.
So I guess the question is, I hope if we go forward, this is a successful thing, otherwise, you know, what's a contingency plan if it doesn't get the usage that you're anticipating?
Well, currently, if we follow the ordinance the way it is, we would do all commerce, if we developed it, which is my intention, to develop it. We have actually gone quite a ways into the planning of the property. And our intention is to move forward with a commercial group development if this were not to get approved. If this were getting approved, really not much changes on that plan, except, you know, some of the buildings on that plan would be residential versus commercial. So, you know, we have an intention to develop it either way. But I think it would make it, I, you know, it's a little bit scary to develop too much commercial, you know, after post-COVID, and so if we could bring some multifamily, would definitely help the development of it, to put some apartment buildings in there as well, condo buildings as well. But I guess, just to answer your question, the contingency plan would be, if for some reason we didn't, this got approved, and we didn't incorporate residential, I guess we can always go back to full commercial on the property.
I'm just, you know, since it is a new concept, you know, how quick is it going? It's eventually going to depend on how profitable it will be to you. And if those buildings aren't utilized, then you have to start looking at your business plan. What are you going to change or try to improve the cash flow in? That's what I'm looking at. What happens if that changes?
We would probably delay it, but there is, as our tourism has tripled in the last 20 years nearly, from 2000 to now, right now, about $3 million to almost eight and a half, $9 million, the number of restaurant seats in their area at large has grown, in my calculations, by about 5%. And there's just not, Corral is estimated to be at roughly 50 to 60% of the restaurant seats they need. So there's very limited commercial space, even though it's been challenging to do commercial stuff. I feel in the long term, I'm a big proponent and advocate of saving some of this commercial space for future needs, because we do need more commercial infrastructure in this area as it grows. We have enough houses and vacation rentals and things like that. So I, I think whether, maybe the timing thing? You know, if for some reason it's a banking thing? But I feel pretty comfortable being able to move forward with this as a commercial development, but certainly adding some residential helps that development path. Banks love to finance multifamily versus commercial. So it does make the development of this a little bit more feasible as well.
And would you tell me again specifically what change you're requesting from what the planning board is recommending?
So the planning boarding, planning board, from my recollection, they've added some additional dimensional requirements, which they felt that should be specified right into the zoning tax amendment, which I have no issue with. And again, I believe they're already covered because it has to go back to those dimensional requirements. And then, really, there was two new things. One was, they were saying, okay, you should, there should be a minimum amount of residential of 25%, which I'm fine with. The underlying thing here is lot coverage, saying, you know, your lot coverage should go down to 50%. There's two things there. Not only are they saying lot coverage should go to 50%, the word net is, right now, in commercial, you have the gross area, any commercial property right now. So not only is it 50%, it's saying it's the net area, taking out a wetlands and things. So that hurts this double time in this property right here. So, you know, I originally said that I would love for you guys to consider keeping the lot coverage the same way and treat this as the same commercial group development, which would be have the current lot coverage. And the only thing we're doing is adding residential. At minimum, I would request is, if you are thinking about reducing the lot coverage and you think that's the better way to do it, then at least take the word net out, and because that's, it's hitting it twice. And it's going, and I can tell you, at that point, we would have no interest on, as of right now, of bringing in residential. To me, this would be a moot point for our property. Now, it still may be a good idea for the town to open it up for future properties, but it would not make sense for us in this case, because I think it's too severe of a penalty for which something I think is a positive for the town.
A couple of questions. In your ZTA-E, it's 40% lot coverage of net parcel area, and this is a building containing residential uses. So if you had vertical development, commercial on the first floor, residential above, you read that to interpret that that whole building footprint goes towards residential coverage?
Yes.
I just want to make sure we're all clear.
Yes.
Okay. And if they're side-by-side, commercial next to residential in the same building, side-by-side, ground floor, that whole building?
Yeah, anything with residential, and that can be clarified, is that it would be towards residential. But if it's a separate, if it's a fully commercial building, it would be into the commercial.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
I, I read it that way. I just want to make sure everybody else sees it. A lot of mixed use that people are familiar with is more of a vertical.
And if I may add one thing on the net, see, on the residential side, we, we presented it the same way because that's how the RS eight reads, a 40%. So if we did only residential, you're back to what's allowable right now anyway. So we're only taking that additional coverage outside the 40% net and going into commercial. That's the only thing that would allow us to go to commercial. And that's where we don't want that taken away, that allowable lot coverage from the commercial side.
So then my second question, and Wes might, or Mr. Strater might answer this better. Net parcel area is not a definition in our zoning. Net acreage is. So with net parcel area, that's, what is your interpretation of that?
It would be taking the property and taking, and I guess it would be only uplands that would be taken in consideration?
Is that what the intent, when, in your language that was proposed? Because it's the same language as in the planning boards, where it's net parcel area.
Yeah.
It doesn't say net acreage, which is what is in our zoning. Okay, so your residential intensity of use is 40% of the net acreage for, using our terminology. But the commercial lot coverage is total parcel area. Okay.
Yes.
As is currently in every commercial district and every residential district in our town.
Any other questions from?
I had another question, Mr. Strater. With other mixed use, because I think you've got probably more experience than anybody in the room with some of these zoning. With other mixed use without the county or nearby towns, what? If you had had some hit points of how this is different from other mixed use zoning in other towns, I mean, would you be able to distill that quickly or is that an overly loaded question?
Well, I mean, I, I can hit on that a little bit. I do think that that, this application as presented is distinguished in that it's, it's more restrictive because the, the commercial group development is limited by the maximum allowable lot coverage that's specified by the commercial zoning, which is the 60% of the total lot area. But then we've also incorporated a further restriction on ourselves of any residential portion of the group development, whether it's on top of or beside of. It can only be 40% of the net parcel area, which is what I think Sumit was trying to explain is there's no way that any mixed-use development site plan that we would submit for you could exceed 60% maximum allowable lot coverage outside of the use of permeable pavements, which allows us to go up to 67%. But in no way, shape, or form would the incorporation of this residential use within group development, could it exceed what's already allowed by commercial group development? So it's, it's more restrictive than any other local ordinances that I've seen to date.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions from council for the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Gupta, Mr. Strater.
Thank you.
And I'm going to let the planning board chair, Mr. Ward, speak. And then we'll have the public portion of the comments.
Oh, good evening, Madam Mayor, Tim Council, Tim Attorney Gallup. Bear with me, I'm in the middle of two eye surgeries. I ain't used to these things. I'm hating it. So I'll be taking them off and on. I think what I'm hearing from the applicant is pretty consistent with, you know, what we've been talking about all along in the planning board discussions that we've had. Our thought process is a little bit different than theirs in that, and he's correct in saying, if it's all residential use in the commercial zone, it's 40% lot coverage. If it's all commercial in the commercial zone, it's 60, up to 67% lot coverage. It appears that if you took what is allowed in the residential and blend it or mix it with what's allowed in the commercial, you get 60% blended in with 40% gives you a pretty good average of 50%. And I think they're in agreement with the 50% lot coverage. So what I've tried to do in the planning board is we've, we've tried to really kind of stay away from the site-specific things on this ZTA. And it's hard to do because I've seen their plan. And I'm just trying to reel in everybody to think this isn't about the applicant's ZTA. They're presenting a ZTA to us asking for something. But in the end, it's townwide. It, it, it would go on for the next development that may want to do mixed use. So it's not, we can't say that it's specific with Gingay LLC. And it's hard to do. I mean, you, you, you all tonight have asked specific questions about their property. And we need to try to stay away from that as much as possible. But I think we're, in essence, we're trying to create a new zoning district out of the, the general commercial district, which would be a mixed-use zoning district. But it's going to still fall in the commercial realm of things. So we need to firm up as a town what we want that to be. And if you look at the, what the planning board went through, and I, I don't want you to think that it's all me. That what I came up with was a collaboration between planning board members and their concerns, some calculations, so on and so forth. But from, from their original ZTA, from, from A to, to E, everything pretty much remains the same except there was a suggestion of a minimum 25% to be injected in item E. I can take or leave that. I don't, I don't really have much heartburn there. Their suggestion was just 40% of the coverage of the net parcel area. From F down to, let's see, K, if we're trying to pull items out of the RS eight and the commercial, from, from item F down to item K, that's just pulling the dimensional requirements out of both of those. When we get to L and M, I think that, and I'll read this. The maximum allowable lot coverage of the net parcel area by principal use in all accessory structures in the aggregate, in the total, for the entire mixed-use development shall be 50%. Mixed-use group development, item M, it, mixed-use group developments which incorporate the use of permeable pavements would get an additional 5% over the total lot coverage. So that's doable to glean more out of that 50% lot coverage. But we, we went at this pretty deliberately. And we felt like that it is a big leap for the town, but it's something that every planning board member wants is mixed use. It's just how do we go about doing it for the future? And your comment about the septic being site-specific, well, yes, it is. I don't have a problem with rearranging the language of the septic system to allow other properties in if that's what we want to do. But I just, and, and the planning board felt very strongly that if we're combining uses to get a mixed-use group development, then we just can't say, okay, you get up to 67% and you can put a lot of residential on there and you don't have to, to come down in lot coverage because of the residential. You get to use 67% for your, your calculation of your residential area there. And we just felt that it was simplistic to do the 50%, up to 55% for previous pavers. And we also looked at, at, let's see, the, and Matt had a question about the, the language, the, the definition of net acreage, I think. Matt, wasn't that your question?
No, I know what the definition is.
Okay.
Net parcel area is not.
It's not, it's not in there. But I, I think you could kind of extrapolate that they're both basically the same, right? I mean, would you agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, the net acreage comes into play here. In the, in the RS eight and the RS 10, they're spelled out. In the commercial, there is no mention, the, the ordinance is silent on net acreage. It's also silent in the RS one. However, we're using net in oceanfront applications because you can only claim buildable property up to the vegetation line. So net is implied in the RS one in, in that, you know, concept of oceanfront development. We questioned, one of, one of the planning board members questioned, well, why isn't net acreage included in the commercial? Nobody had an answer, including Wes. It's not in there. Why isn't it included in RS one? It's in RS 10, it's in RS eight. So it, it, I think the sticking point for the applicant is that they feel that wetlands and marsh should be counted as the total allowable buildable parcel. And we disagree. So as far as, as, you know, being in favor of mixed use, we're in favor of it. But it, it's, it's kind of like we've, they've started down the path and we've added on to it. And in fact, there are more words in what the planning board approved for recommendations than there are in the original ZTA. So Wes has kind of spelled out your options in his report. And I think, you know, like he said, you can approve the ZTA tonight as it's presented. You can deny the ZTA as presented. You can table the ZTA. Or number four, approve the ZTA with planning board recommendations and recommended requirements, which is also what town staff is recommending. And then item five would be amend the ZTA, which may require another planning board review. And then finally, number six would be send the ZTA back to the planning board for further discussion. So items five and six, the planning board would see it again. Anyway, that was our thought process. And we've been working on it since February, I think. Anyway, any questions on where we're at as a planning board with, with our discussion?
Any questions from council?
I would just like to say, Annie and I have had multiple conversations about this. And so that's why I'm not asking questions because I feel like he and I have really talked about this a lot. And so I'm, I'm good. But I would like to say thank you for all the work that the planning board does. And I appreciate it. And I know it's, it's hard work and I appreciate it. I appreciate you.
That's, that's what we're here for. But I just, I just want to stress that it's, it, it, it's not about this, this site. It's about the future of what we want to do as a town. And, you know, you hear stuff about, you know, well, it's done this way in other towns. Well, you know what? There's a good reason that every one of us lives here because it's not done this way in southern shores always. So just keep that in mind when you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Do we have a sign-up sheet, Wes? I'm going to call the names on the sign-up sheet or the name on the sign-up sheet, but I will open it after that to anybody else in the public who wishes to speak. But the name on the sign-up sheet is Mike Stone, if you'd like to come forward.
I'm glad it's not addressing commercial in general. I'd like to keep that 60% lot coverage. And at one point, I thought the lot coverage for residential going on there was 60% also. So it might have been downsized. And Wes brought up, y'all mentioned a couple of times about having a wastewater plant put in place, built prior to putting any residential on. It kind of probably interferes with drain fills and everything else when you're putting in the parking and everything else. Wherever that is in it, I would just ask that that be removed. That's about all I got to say about it. Other than, I have every now and then thought about putting people in some of my commercial property to live simply because they don't have a place to go. I mean, I have another employee I'm going to lose then in a month because they don't have any place to live. What would be the options, excuse me, I've got a little cough and everything else. If I did do that, currently, if I did that, y'all would potentially reduce my lot coverage down to 50% based on this. But in also doing that, I'll use crossing as an example. I still have plans to put on, in additional parking so that I can finish filling all the units. And I haven't done that. I have plans to put in a street between the Southern Shores Realty Building to the, one of the accesses to crossing so that traffic doesn't have to get back out on the road to get back to the crossing. But once again, if I, you know, did that, lot coverage would be reduced. I wouldn't be able to fill that entrance. That's just some of the things I would have to deal with if I tried to house somebody temporarily even in a commercial space using this formula. That's all I got.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Stone? Thank you, Mr. Stone. Does anyone else in the public wish to speak to this ZTA? Ask one more time, does anyone else in the public wish to speak to this ZTA? Seeing no one, Madam Mayor, I'll close the public hearing and give it back to you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to call a very, very, very short recess before we get into our discussions about this ZTA. We'll get back here in about four minutes. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Four minutes.
I said it was very short.
Yeah, I don't need to be concerned.
Thank you very much for that brief recess. We're back in session. So the public hearing on the ZTA is closed, and Ben Galif is handed it over to the council. I believe Matt wanted to possibly ask some questions. Would you like to start us off, Matt?
I just had a question for Wes.
Question for Wes.
Maybe a couple. I'll try to limit it.
That's fine. You can ask four or five.
Four or five. Yes, sir.
In the planning board's recommended zoning text amendment.
Requirements.
The, in the actual text, PB ZTA 2206, there's dimensional requirements added to the list.
Right.
Where else in our zoning do we see dimensional requirements within a use listing?
I don't recall right now. I don't think there are many, if there are any.
And the second section down, Commercial District, is D, dimensional requirements, correct?
Yes.
Does this mirror that identically?
Not all of them. I mean, but, but Chairperson Ward stated earlier, it takes, what is it from F through K, I believe, something. So, no, it's not common. You don't see it in many other use requirements. However, I do think there is a benefit to having all the requirements in one location.
But do they differ from the regular Commercial District dimensional requirements?
Well, the density, there are some that come from commercial, and there are some that come from residential. The 40% lot coverage of the net parcel area comes from RS eight. The 25, 15, 20, 35, I believe, all of those also come from C and RS eight. 35, I know, is C and RS eight. The 50 feet, the J, no building or other facility should be located near than 50 feet, that comes from commercial. As well as K, that is commercial.
Yeah. So they're mostly already listed in the Commercial District, correct?
Like I said, it's, it's a mixture, but the majority of them come from commercial.
Okay. That was my main question.
While Wes is there, does any other council member have a question for Wes?
Just appears that it's item L, the difference of opinion.
That's correct. As Chairperson Ward stated, Mr. Gupta stated, the 50%. And then again, it's in L, it does include the net parcel area. And I understand Mr. Neal's question earlier, the definition in zoning ordinance is net acreage, but I have considered net parcel, net parcel area and net acreage to be the same thing as far as this, as far as this goes. So I guess it's, the decision is up to you all.
Do we, what impact, how much of an impact would we have if we use total area versus net?
Then they would be able to develop, theoretically, they'd be able to develop more residential area, because their proposal limits it. I'm sorry?
I was just saying, it's more restrictive.
It's, yeah, it's, it's more restrictive with the 50% net acreage. Because if they, if that didn't apply, then the total site for what they've applied for would be either 60% of the total lot area.
Okay.
Instead of the net area, and then, or it could be 67% of the total lot area and not the net area. So it's, it's less of a development footprint for residential and commercial.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Current Commercial District is total lot area.
Correct. If someone wanted to develop a vacant lot in the Commercial District today as a group development of commercial buildings, which is currently allowed, it would be 60% based on the total lot area, or 67% based on the total lot area, if they use permeable pavement in excess of 5% of whatever lot coverage they're proposing.
RS one is total lot area.
RS one is total lot area.
RS eight is total lot area.
RS eight with respect to, I'm pretty sure RS eight is net.
It says in lot coverage, it does not mention net. The only place net shows up in the entire RS eight section is.
Density.
Is the density, unit per acre.
Okay.
And same with RS 10. So, and I don't see at any point that it applies to lot coverage anywhere in our zoning now, as, as far as I read it. It's all total lot area for lot coverage.
That was a real learning point for me going through this, is learning that lot coverage is based on total lot area in the town of Southern Shores, whether it's a residential lot or, or commercial. So that was a learning point for me. I did not realize that.
Thank you, Wes.
Thanks, Wes. Well, I guess I want, I'll start out. I, I really think that essentially, this is a commercial development, and we're pulling in residential, dense residential into it, which I think, if I haven't said it, I think the idea of mixed use group development is a good idea for the town of Southern Shores. I do think that I would either want to take it to a 60% lot coverage, like other commercial areas, or at the very least, use total parcel area if we're going to drop it down from the 60. So one of those two, because I do agree that it's, it's two takeaways, so to speak. And I do think this is a overall good idea for the town of Southern Shores.
If we moved it to 60%, what, does that, would that allow everything to be done that the applicant's asking for?
Well, I don't really want to.
Is that restrictive?
Think about it more in just the general.
Yeah, I think we need to think about it in terms of just zoning text amendment for the town of Southern Shore. So.
Well, when we do that, does it become less restrictive or more restrictive?
It becomes the same as the Commercial District. So I mean, if you were to build, or anybody were to build in the Commercial District, a group of office buildings, some connected by pavilion, they would be allowed 67% coverage.
Yeah.
Now, let's see, there's same office villas, but two of them have housing in it, you know, Tyree or Widows, all of them same. Where does that change of use affect the lot coverage? I mean, that's the part I have a major struggle with. And say, the marketplace wants to develop apartments, try to figure out staff housing, now they have to have a reduced 50% total lot coverage. So it, I mean, I just, if, if there's allowed to be up to 67% with a commercial site plan, with commercial stormwater management in place, why, if you have residential apartments, and I don't see the need for the restriction of overall lot coverage.
It's really hard to put a lot of emphasis on the difference between 50 and 60 as well. So, and, and I just keep going back to, this is a commercially zoned, this is in our commercial zone. It's, it's, so therefore, that's what I'm leaning towards.
Going to 67 or 60?
Well, 60, in the commercial zoning, 60% is your baseline. You're allowed 67% permeable.
I'm just trying to understand that.
Yeah, yeah. And I, it's, it's confusing. I deal with it way too much.
Yes.
And we don't.
But I mean, the wastewater is a limiting factor to who this is necessarily available immediately. And I think in some ways, that's, that could be a tiptoe into this new concept. And we might want to down the road and eliminate that as a restriction, or eliminate it in general.
We can always revisit that.
But at the moment, we're tiptoeing into this to see what unintended consequences.
Well, that's what I've said. You know, this is a new concept.
Exactly.
For the town. And we need to kind of crawl before we start running.
That's, that's my thoughts on it. But you look at it from a development standpoint, if you make the restriction so much that the use wouldn't even necessarily be utilized, there's no point in doing it.
Correct. I hear that.
Well, I'll, I'll just add, I'm, I'm a bit in the weeds with this, because this is not an area that I'm that familiar with. But I do know that in this community, there is, I think there is a need for more housing options for people. Not, not just affordable housing, although that certainly is an option, but just an option for people who don't want to live in a five bedroom house anymore and are looking for something else. And now, those, those options are just extremely limited. I also know that Southern Shores doesn't love a lot of commercial development. And so I love this concept of mixing the two. And I hate to see any, us put so many restrictions that it's simply not economically feasible for anybody to look at one of these developments. But I, I, Matt has so much more knowledge in this area than I do, and I have great, great respect for the work that the planning board has done, and I know that they've spent a lot of time on this. So I'm, I'm really very torn on this.
Wes, you may.
Back to Mayor Pertim Neal's question about 40% lot coverage in RS eight. Right now, in the Commercial District, multifamily structures are subject to 40% lot coverage.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what I was thinking you were referring to. But it's not in the RS eight, but it's specifically in the use requirements in the C, General Commercial District for Residential Uses, multifamily structures.
But it doesn't say, it's still total lot coverage.
It's still total lot coverage, but it's, it is 40%.
But just to add to you, what's funny about that whole language that cracks me up is a single family or duplex.
Is not.
67%.
Right, yes. Just wanted to clarify.
You want to ferret out some of the oddities in our zoning, that's one of them.
Thank you.
I'll be the first to admit, there's some challenges still left in our ordinances. That's, that's.
They're not.
Very true. Okay, so we, we've almost, we've actually been here longer than two hours. I don't want to rush anyone into anything, but if, if, am I hearing that, what am I hearing? Do we want to make a few changes to the planning board recommendations and vote on that?
I'm, I think that I would be comfortable with the deletion of L and M.
I need to hear it, Matt.
Oh, I'm sorry. I said, I think I would be comfortable with deletion of L and M.
What, doing one?
Say it again. L and M, deletion. Excuse me.
Deleting L and M?
So then the lot coverage would be calculated based on what?
The General Commercial District.
General Commercial District.
Which is already, which is up there further in as E.
So instead of editing the words in L and M, you're suggesting we just delete those two altogether?
Well, I mean, the, yeah, because it revert back to the General Commercial District coverage.
Okay.
And with still present, the 40% residential net parcel area, which is more restrictive than the current RS eight.
Right.
Residential requirements. And it keeps in the suggestion of a 25% minimum. And Wes has me convinced that having the dimensional requirements listed there may have some value, even though it's listed two more paragraphs down.
Okay. All right. If we were to delete L and M, and approve this as zoning text amendment, without sending it back to the planning board, is that possible?
As always, this is a somewhat.
Yes, talk us about risk. I'm.
A complicated, a complicated answer. Given that this is really a combination of the planning board and the applicant's proposal, I think that it's likely that a court would find that there was, that this was something that people might expect to see if they'd come. So it wouldn't necessarily be something that you would send back. However, the way to always solve that risk is to send it back and bring it back again. I think in this case, you'll probably be okay. But it's, it is a somewhat substantial change. But it's a, it's a combination between the planning board and what was proposed by the applicant. And I think someone might, would expect that to have.
Okay.
To be a result.
All right. Did you want to put that in the form of a motion, Matt?
Let me make sure I'm reading this the way I want to read it.
Okay.
Because we're adding some dimensional requirements written in here. We've got the residential restriction, which basically matches the residential restriction of the RS eight, I mean, the General Commercial District. Then we're allowing the overall coverage to stay the same for General Commercial District. Yeah, I mean, I, I think if a commercial project can have such 67%, and you had a little bit of residential use to that, I don't think I have, generally have a problem. I'm just thinking of my on the fly edit is what I would like to say. I think the deletion is cleaner than editing a word.
Because that would be the other option. Can I ask Wes again to come up and answer one more question? I apologize.
Yes, ma'am.
Just want to be clear from you as the staff person who is actually tasked with doing this for the town. If we were to pass this without L and M, do you have any concerns about using this zoning text amendment if you were given a site plan and you had to do your review? Do you, do you have confidence that you have everything in this zoning testament, the amendment that you need in order to properly review an application?
Basically, the only thing that wouldn't be in here is that the 60% lot coverage would apply to the, or 67 if permeable pavement is used, would apply. And without it being shown here, I would, to answer your question, yes, I would know that that's what applies for the overall site. And then 25 and 40 would apply to the residential building footprints and parking uses.
I just want to make sure we're not going to create something that you would have difficulty implementing.
I would be able to implement that.
Okay.
And this would be a little simpler than taking L and M out?
I don't know if it's a matter of simplicity. I don't know if it's a matter of simplicity. That's not really the same question.
No, it's just whether he can implement it or not, whether he can properly review a site plan.
Yeah. I'm looking at how easy it would be for him to do that.
Yeah, that's what I want, just him to reassure us.
And not be confusing to future applicants.
Clear to delete L and M, this, the single differentiating factor from the applicant's ETA would be the minimum 25% at that point.
There is, the other one also is that on, if you look, it, it changes the title of the use.
Yes, number 11.
Instead of group, instead of group development of commercial and residential buildings, it adds the words mixed use, which is a clarification that was also recommended by the board, so that would be the other change.
I actually like that.
Yeah.
Clarification. We were talking about mixed-use group development.
What does anybody think?
Mark, did you want to weigh in?
I can support, I can support that.
Okay. Leo?
Yes, I can support. Do we have a motion on the floor yet?
Not yet, not yet, not yet. I think others are.
But, but what I'm hearing, I think, sounds, it's another compromise.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that really a compromise?
Well, we're, we're adopting some of the recommendations of the Planning Board, but we're stopping short of adopting L and M. So we're, we're adopting the, the term mixed-use group development of commercial and residential buildings. We're adopting the minimum of 25% and no more than 40% as well as including the setbacks that are.
Already.
Already in the ordinances in other locations, but for simplification, we're putting him in here as well. Taking the recommendations of the Planning Board in those, for that, all that wording.
And this would be followed for any commercial property?
Anything that's zoned commercial.
Zoned.
In the zone, in the commercial zone district.
Commercial zone.
Zoning district, yes.
Well, I'm, I'm a little more comfortable with the second alternative that our mayor suggested with using the total lot coverage than I am going to the 60, only because I don't have a complete understanding of how this would impact all of these different parcels. But I'm not adamantly opposed.
Probably the reason, well, Matt, I think that's your reasoning is to, to delete L and M, because we already have it in another area, in our commercial, general, commercial district.
My reasoning, I think, is, again, like, if you go to General Commercial District, RS8 has a restriction. If you do a multifamily structure in the General Commercial District, and it's only multifamily as it is, you got to go to 40%. But then, like, if you did a duplex, you can have 67%. I'm not certain where that restriction of lot coverage even comes from, just because you introduce a different use. I mean, it's not, I don't know what goal it's meeting, I guess is what I'm getting at.
Yeah, stormwater.
If you've already adjusted the property to, and zoned it in the General Commercial, under General Commercial, Commercial Standards, 60%, I'm not sure what an introduction of a use does to change that. And that's, that's really the way I look at it.
That's kind of where I came around to.
Okay.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, I guess, since it's quiet. I'll make a motion to adopt PB ZTA 22-06 with the deletion of L and M.
Let's see, now, there was some staff recommended wording. Does that meet the recommendations that you all were concerned about making sure? We get it correct?
There was wording about 11, yeah.
I don't consider PB ZTA 2206 to be a separate ZTA. I think what that is, is the recommended requirements that the Plan, the Planning Board's recommendation is in their requirements. So I would suggest that it be ZTA 2206 with X, Y, and Z. Planning Board recommended requirements.
Got it. So it's, on page 58, it's number four. And then your amendments to Planning Board requirements.
I don't take coaching very well.
I know.
I make a motion to adopt ZTA 2206 with the Planning Board's recommendation, recommendation with the exception of L and M.
I'll second it. Any further discussion, counsel?
I didn't understand on 11, mixed-use development, there was a change in that wording?
That's part of the Planning Board.
Is that part of the Planning Board's?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we're amending that as well?
Yes.
So my intent, for the record, is on page 64, 65, and 66, is what appears to look like a zoning text amendment, but not in the format of what I'm suggesting.
Okay. Pretty sure everybody gets it.
Yeah, right there. Yeah. Okay.
Any other? Good?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Good. Hearing no further discussion, we have a motion in a second. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, counsel. This was, this was not easy. This has been a lot of thoughtful discussions, and it is something new, and it did require, it required some work. So I appreciate the staff, Planning Board, council members, et cetera. I think in the end, I'm hoping this is going to be good for the town of Southern Shores. All right. We now need to move, counsel, to, on, under new business, number eight, which is on page 72, Planning Board appointments. Wes, are you handling this?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor. We have two members, two regular members whose terms are set to expire on June 30th, Linda Burick and Tony Di Bernardo. Both members have indicated that they would, that they are interested and willing to serve another three-year term. We also have a vacant alternate member position due to the unexpected and unfortunate passing of Mr. Galgansky. In that case, we have an application that's on file that was included in your packets from Mr. Fink, James Daniel Fink, and that application was submitted last year. We did have it on file since there were no, there were no openings up until this time. And I contacted Mr. Fink, and he did say that he'd be willing to, and that he's interested in serving as the alternate member to fill that vacancy. So the recommendation is to appoint the two regular members as well as the new alternate member to three-year term.
Very good. Any questions for Wes? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
So we need to have a motion to appoint Dan Fink to alternate position two and reappoint Linda Burick and Tony Di Bernardo to three-year terms. All three, actually, those individuals would be appointed to three-year terms. Is that correct? Yes, yes, okay.
Okay. I, I move that we appoint Dan Fink to alternate position two and reappoint Linda Burick and Tony Di Bernardo to three-year terms that expire on June 30th, 2025.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you to all of our Planning Board volunteers. We are now open for general public comment. Does anybody wish to comment in the public? And if you haven't signed up, if you still want to say something, we're happy to have you say something. Counsel business. Leo, why don't you kick us off?
Well, I'll start, as I usually do, with occupancy and meal collections from the, that I got from the Tourism Board. Occupancy collections for the month of March was off 18%. Current year-to-date is still up 7%. But when you go back and look at what we might consider a normal March was 2019 versus March this year, it's up 144%.
Wow.
So normal to abnormal, I guess, is what you might say. Meals is making a recovery for the month of March, is up 6% and current year-to-date is up 11%. And if you make that same comparison from March of 2019 to March of this year, meals are up 28%.
Very good.
And of course, the Planning Board has supported our efforts, so I'll thank them again, because we, we meet again on the 30th of June, because we have to approve our budget. So we're cutting that one a little close.
Okay. Mark?
I'm good.
Okay. I'll go next. I, last week, was sworn in to the Executive Board of the League of Municipalities as a District One representative, and I went to my first meeting in Raleigh, and I'll let you know how it goes. It was interesting. I enjoyed, I enjoyed meeting people. I enjoyed the experience. They were also doing budget work, so it was a lot of approving of budgets and so forth and so on. It's a great organization. I think they do a lot for towns and cities across the state. I hope to at least figure out a way to make a contribution, so that's my news. Paul?
I'd just like to note that we do have a new portrait on the wall, our Hall of Fame here, and Southern Shore's first woman mayor.
Wow.
Is, is now enshrined. And we'd also like to say an official happy birthday to Anna, who is waiting for her birthday cake somewhere for her daddy to get home from the council meeting.
She might still be awake. I was going to say something more serious than that, but the.
No, go ahead.
I was just, with the budget this year, we've been very fortunate to have excess, not excess revenues, quite a bit of revenues from land transfer and occupancy intake. And I think next year, it's going to be a little bit tougher discussion for all of us, so I just.
I think next year, we may have to talk about the.
The dreaded word that says tax increase. Again, we were very fortunate this year with, with the increase in some of those revenues.
Well, it's going to, we'll see how the impact is.
A happy birthday to my daughter.
Yeah, happy birthday to Anna. Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Thank you all. Appreciate your time, everybody.
Listen, if you think about that ZTA, it was time only to.